Council on this Wednesday, January the eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. And we have all the council members here this evening and a lot of our city administrative staff. And we welcome those who have joined us from our public and those who have joined us remotely. We welcome you all. We'll start the night out with a pledge of allegiance from council member, not council member, with Kyler Brower, Assistant to our City Administrator. After which, we'll have a opening remarks by Councilmember Anderson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we're very grateful for this opportunity that we have to come together as citizens of Pleasant Grove. We're grateful for our opportunity to serve and, um, and connect with the great citizens of this town. We're grateful for, uh, the citizens and their involvement and their desire to serve each other. We ask this night that as we are presented, um, the agenda items, that we will be able to make those decisions that are best for Pleasant Grove in the long run. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Diana and Kyler. Now move on to our first item here on our approval of tonight's meeting agenda.
Yep, we do have some changes, Mayor. Our state senator, future state senator, I don't think he's been sworn in yet as state senator.
I think it was today, wasn't it?
Maybe today?
It was today, I think.
Oh, was it today?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll find out. He's running a little bit late, so, um, he's telling me he'll be here about six-thirty. And then item eight B is something we're going to continue, um, to our meeting in two weeks. Uh, so, yeah, we just, we can start with eight C when we get to that part of our, our meeting.
So we noted those two changes and, and so I asked for a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
We have most my councilmember Jensen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my councilmember Anderson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move on to our open session, item number five, and invite anybody to come forward and address the council at this time. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our open session and bring it back up here to the council and move on to item number six, our consent items this evening, which are considerable ones, A through O. So it's, uh, we will not go through all those. You have a few with time to review those. So I ask for a motion to, to approval of our consent items.
Mayor, make a motion to approve tonight's consent items as listed.
We have a motion by councilmember Jensen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Anderson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Just a note for those who don't have the, uh, the, mostly these are all payments from all of our construction projects that are still going on and what we're finished, we finished up late this fall. So now move on to our, uh, we don't, we do not have any board commissioner committee appointments this evening. And, uh, we've, we'll push back our first presentation and then moves, move now to, uh, our presentation on Choose Kindness. And Eric, do you want to lead off with that?
No, they, we'll invite them up. This is exciting. This is, this has been a long time. I think Sarah and I talked about, it was close to nine years ago that this was first organized and that it's just blossomed into something awesome our community is. Are these ladies are rock stars? That's all I'm gonna say. Go take it away.
Yes, we're so excited. Thank you for having us here and for all of your support. This is our sixth year standing before you for this month, upcoming month, February, to be proclaimed as Choose Kindness Month. And we can't believe it's the sixth year. But one thing has changed since I last stood before you, and that is I had a baby in November.
Cute little guy.
Thank you. And because of some complications at birth, my bait, my sweet baby was in the NICU for two weeks. And while we were there, it was a really tender time. Um, and one day when me and my husband were going up to the NICU, we'd gotten the elevator and there was another sweet young mom in the elevator as well. And she asked me if my baby was in the NICU. And I said yes, and without saying another word, she gave me a big hug and we both just cried and had compassion and love for each other in that moment. And over the past two months of having our sweet baby come home and in that specific moment, I was reminded of the importance of compassion and the importance of kindness and that as individuals, we have an opportunity to make a difference in the lives of those around us in our community as we choose kindness. So I love the quote that says, "When you match your compassion with your purpose, it enables us to change the world." This can be done with simple, a simple smile, a text at the right moment, or an act of service, a simple act of kindness. Six years ago, I created this proclamation when I was Miss Pleasant Grove with the desire to spread a ripple of kindness through our city of Pleasant Grove by having the whole month of February dedicated to spreading kindness through our schools, our businesses, and each member of our community. Each and every year since we have seen this ripple effect move through our city, the month of February and throughout the year. One paragraph in the proclamation says, "Whereas experiencing an act of kindness can improve our mood, change our day, and increase the likelihood of spreading that kindness to others. We see that when we are kind, we inspire others to be kind, and it actually creates a ripple that's, that spreads outwards, just as a pebble creates waves when it is dropped in a pond. So acts of kindness ripple outwards, touching lives and inspiring kindness everywhere the wave goes. And we encourage our citizens to choose to practice kindness through increased awareness of its benefits. We can achieve our goal to strengthen individuals in our community and our community as a whole as we see the ripple effect of kindness can have on each one of us." We are excited to invite everyone here and everyone in our city to celebrate this month of February with us by spreading kindness, one simple act of kindness at a time. As a Choose Kindness Board and Committee, we are excited about the month of February and we are grateful for all who have helped to make this happen. We've been working really hard. We will kick the month off with a service project for homeless individuals done by all of the Choose Kindness Clubs in each of our schools, which is so amazing. We've loved watching those grow over the years. Um, and then we have a calendar with daily invitations to be kind and a month-long service project for children in hospitals, making comfort kits that we will get the whole community involved in at the end of the month. The last Saturday of February, February twenty-second, we'll gather at the rec center to put those care kits together. So we're excited about that. We are excited about a full month of kindness and we are grateful for you as our city council and our mayor for supporting us in this great cause for six years. We can't believe it. Now Ruth is going to talk about our community event on February twenty-sixth, and then Rebecca will talk about our Choose Kindness sweatshirts and how we're selling those to raise money for each of the schools, Choose Kindness Clubs, as well as spread our message of kindness.
Thanks, Brooke. Okay, so something we're doing a little different this year. On February twenty-sixth, we're going to have a huge event, a community-wide event at Pleasant Grove High School, and we're going to focus on creating a community of kindness. And so we have Kirby Hayborn coming to that event, and he's from BYU TV's Making Good. And he's going to share a kindness message. And before he talks, we are going to have service projects that families, teens, we're really trying to push this towards teens to come and they can participate in doing some service. We also have partnered with One Kind Act a Day, which is the state of Utah's kindness initiative. And they are going to certify us as a city of kindness at that event, too. So we're pretty excited to have them on board with us, too, and to be a sponsor of our kindness month. So it's going to be a great event and we're going to be advertising that and making sure the word gets out to everyone for that.
And then Ruth, will you make sure that you send, if there's graphics or anything to the city?
Yeah.
And then we can help spread the word about that?
Yes. Yeah, that'll be great.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I love that.
Yeah, and that'll be a good youth event, so we're hoping to invite all the youth to come to that. So that'll be great. Yeah, and we're selling these sweatshirts through our schools. Um, one thing that I love about our Choose Kindness program is the, um, effect that it has on the elementaries. We've got all of our elementary schools, we have a couple charter schools that participate, even Lyndon Elementary is a part of, part of our organization. And the, the people there at those schools are amazing. The teachers and the principals, um, will come and they, they sponsor these programs through their elementary and they really are making a difference. And it's fun to see that in the lives of the kids. The kids are learning, um, learning messages of how to, how to kind of pay attention, right? And what is kindness and how to implement that. And we've really seen that and we're growing a community of kindness. And so, um, this teach, these, as, these are available on our website, they're available on our social media, we're selling them for twenty-five dollars and the proceeds are going back to all of the schools. And so they, people can select on their, which school they want it to go to. And that's great. And we've had, we usually have some of the schools sell a lot of them every year. So we're excited about that and we're really grateful for all the, um, community support we've gotten and, um, for our committee and the people who run this. So thanks so much.
Okay. Hey, we, we want you to come up so we can get up. And then I have something, I have the, uh, signed proclamation here for you.
Well, that sounds like a picture.
Yeah, hold it up for the picture.
Put Diana behind the mayor.
You probably don't want to be red.
What's that? Yeah.
Now, back row split.
I'm split.
Are we two?
Wait. No. Wait, go that, go that way, just a tidge. There we go.
Take like three or four. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How cute.
And I apologize to you guys for being the large person in the picture.
But that's just the way it works out sometimes, anyway. Okay, with that, we will move on to our, uh, we have no public hearings this evening. We'll move on to our first action item, uh, ready for vote this evening, and it's ten A, the Consider For Adoption Resolution, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one, authorizing the mayor to sign the right-of-way land and use agreement between Chad Blackhurst, Manager of Flower Pedal Farms LLC, and Pleasant Grove City. Turn the time over to our Public Works Director.
Just to recap what we discussed in the, uh, work, work session, uh, there's a parcel of land that is being considered for development. The developer is, is here. I don't know if you want to ask him any questions. This is the parcel of land, uh, under consideration for development. Uh, naturally, a roadway system would look like this. A concept came in, uh, that would look like this. Upon further discussion and review, um, the south half, uh, of the property was under different ownership and does not desire to develop at this time. So in working with the different departments, uh, namely the, the fire department and planning and engineering, we discussed an opportunity to create, uh, a temporary access, uh, or a, or an emergency access on the south half with a cul-de-sac and a pedestrian access out to one hundred east. There are several benefits. Um, again, just to highlight the property that does not desire to develop and build homes, but acknowledges that there could be homes there in the very near future. Um, this is the cur, uh, this is the curve upon which we're trying to reduce access and limit access out to a collector road. Um, and that is, the agreement is related to this parcel here. I don't believe Mr. Blackhurst, the representative, is here. Uh, but, uh, it's a land use, uh, agreement to allow after the plat is recorded, the cosi, the, the other signer of the agreement to utilize the property that will be city property, uh, after the plat is recorded. So if there is a motion to be entertained, it should be similar to after the, the project is approved or after the plat is recorded, uh, the city can authorize the mayor to sign the agreement, uh, that is before you. So do you have any questions for me or for the developer, uh, of the north half of the property?
No.
No, I don't think so. The packet and the explanation and the work session, uh, sufficed, in my opinion.
Any other questions, council? Nope. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for your, your previous in-depth discussion on it. We appreciate that, so. So with that, I ask for a motion on Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one.
All right, Mayor, I may, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one on the condition of the plat being signed.
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember Anderson and a second by councilmember Lamone. And we will start out with councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Okay, passes unanimously. That includes that portion of our, uh, motion will now move on to, uh, ten B to consider for award the two thousand and twenty-five pavement preservation project to Geneva Rock Products Incorporated and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award. And we'll turn the time back over to our director.
Also, as discussed in the work session, we received competitive bids and pricing for numerous roads throughout the city to receive treatment. Uh, and I recommend that we, um, award and, and proceed with the Geneva Rock Products to the tune of about three and a half million dollars.
How many, how many bid proposals did we get back on?
Received two proposals, one from Intermountain and one from Geneva Rock. Geneva Rock performed last year for us, Intermountain the year before. And, uh, this is a good, uh, bid in line with current pricing and, and competitively. They were very close for three and a half million dollars.
Basically, that's our only two contractors in the state to do microsealing, isn't that correct?
Pretty much, yeah. Yep, there's others who have thought about getting into it, but, uh, this is it, pretty much.
Okay. Any questions, council?
No.
I just, I just wanted to make sure, so we don't have in our packet, um, the complete thing that was sent out for bid, but that will be made public on the website eventually, the roads that will be treated. Is that right? I mean, of course, the packet's already public.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Um, that's just in the process and, and it's not all the way finalized. I wanted to add a few more roads after some discussion and review of the utilities that are underneath them. We don't want to perform this particular treatment on the roads that need utilities. Uh, so it's, it's not, I wouldn't say that it's, uh, an ongoing and, and never-ending, but it, it does require us to continue to evaluate and receive the pricing, add a few more roads if budget permits, which it will. And then, uh, for sure by the, uh, the, the time we meet for budget preparation with the council in February, we'll have that available.
Excellent.
Any other questions, council?
No.
Ask for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion for awarding the two thousand and twenty-five pavement preservation project to Geneva Rock Products Incorporated and authorize the mayor to sign a notice of award.
We have a motion by councilmember Jensen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by?
Councilman Rogers.
Councilmember Rogers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now move to our last action item this evening, uh, ten C to consider for approval of two lot, one parcel commercial subdivision plat called Valley Grove Business Park Plat Q. This subdivision is approximately nineteen point sixteen acres in size and is located approximately twelve thirty-four South Valley Grove Way and thirteen twelve South Valley Grove Way and parcel number five four four five with zero 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 three seven. Proposed plat includes the vaca, vacation of a parcel B of lot thirty-five of the Valley Grove Business Park Plat P subdivision in the Grove Zone, Valley Grove Mixed Use Overlay. An applicant is Marty Belmont, and we'll turn time back to, or the Director Cardenas.
Mayor, council, before I start this and, um, let me do this, let's look at an aerial view of the area that we're going to talk about. Okay, so here's our, uh, the, um, I fifteen, and this is, uh, the project that St. John's Properties is developing. So, um, north again is that way. And now having seen that, I'm going to show you what the existing plat for the property is. Okay? So this is the existing plat. Again, north is, uh, that way, that's going north. Um, this is I fifteen, and this is Placing Grove Boulevard, Placing Grove Boulevard and I fifteen. This is what exists right now, meaning that we have a couple of lots that are ready for development. We have lot thirty-three, we have lot thirty-two, okay? Uh, we have lot thirty-four and, uh, lot thirty-five. Um, so what the applicant is proposing in this new plat is to section the land to create new property lines. So he's going to section this area right here that I'm showing with my mouse from here to the south, okay? So what the applicant is proposing is to create a new plat where this lot is going to be kept. There's a couple of changes in the, in the property lines, but they're ineligible. So actually, the, what the applicant is proposing for the new plat is keeping this lot and creating a brand-new lot, which is going to be lot thirty-seven, leaving this area right here as a parcel C, uh, an area that is unbuildable at this, at this time, okay? So again, the proposed, the, the, the idea of what the applicant is proposing is creating a new, is propos, uh, what the applicant is proposing is the creation of a new lot. Again, you can build on a lot, you cannot build on a parcel. Parcel is land that is not buildable at this time. As the applicant kind of is facing the project, right? So he's going to, uh, building on a section, leaving the other section unbuildable, and then creating more areas that are ready to be built. Actually, right now, we actively, staff is reviewing, I have a site plan application for lot thirty-six. It's a, a, a phone center with, uh, bowling lanes and, and a movie theater. And we are reviewing right now a site plan on lot thirty-six. Lot thirty-seven is coming and, and, and the applicant, I don't have an application right now, but that's the reason why the applicant is subdividing and creating a lot is because I'm pretty sure a site plan is, is on its way, okay? Um, we took this item to the planning commission, the planning commission forwarded, uh, unanimous recommendation of approval as what the applicant is doing is creating new, new areas to be able to build. As mayor and council, that's what I have for today.
So where, where's the new hotel? Can you point that out?
Right here.
Right there, okay. All right, I got my beret.
We do have the applicant here.
That's right, it's on there.
Yeah, again, this is, if we look at this one, this is, uh, I fifteen, runs right here. And North County Boulevard, uh, sorry, Placing Grove Boulevard will be kind of like around in this area right here. Okay? This is Valley Grove Way. And, uh, just for, for reference, as I always love to, if we're looking at this portion, let's pretend that we're cutting something, putting a line right here, and it's from here, including this, okay? That's what I have, Mayor. I don't know if that helps you, help us to locate ourselves a little bit better.
You know, I'd like to invite, uh, Marty to come forward, the applicant, and we're always glad you, when you're with us and bring things to us here, Marty, but we, we like to kind of, uh, push you for a little update on what's going on down there a little bit, too.
No, this is a great.
What you can reveal to us without.
Yeah, probably the same as last time, which wasn't much.
You weren't helpful last time.
I know, not at all.
I think he's not divulging.
So, yeah, the hotel is sitting right here next adjacent to this lot thirty-six. So it's, as you've seen, the foundation's in, the, uh, the foundation walls are coming up. Um, and we've got two other buildings just north of this, right on Pleasant Grove Boulevard that are, um, through their foundations as well and starting to come up out of the ground. You'll start to see some great progress on those here in the next few months. You'll start seeing quite a bit of shape come to those buildings. Um, as, as we've done throughout for the last ten years, as far as, as, as the development of property continues to proceed forward, we just subdivide off little pieces of land as is needed to be able to start the development on those new pieces. And so there's, uh, things that we have in the works and, and this is the next, uh, one of the next pieces that is being looked at now for development. Um, uh, exciting stuff. Uh, we've got a, you know, today I, um, sat in some meetings for a couple, two or three hours discussing another, um, thirty to forty thousand square feet of retail coming to this area. And, and so, yeah, lots of things moving forward. We're moving forward on a lot of design concepts and excited to start seeing those coming forth. So in the next couple of months, you'll see some new applications for additional development happening, new plats, subdividing more property and more, more buildings coming, so it is, it is great.
Any other questions for Marty? Maybe we should just call it, like, Area Fifty-One, sit lot thirty-seven, Marty, I don't know.
We could do that, yes.
Well, I love the address, one, two, three, four, South Valley. That's pretty cool.
Yeah. I thought it was thirteen twelve. Well, that's got the wrong address on it, so that, that changed, but it is the same lot.
No, that one right there is one, two, three, four.
Oh, yeah, yeah, on lot thirty-six. That one is correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Marty. We look forward to your next trip back to us with more information. So, okay, with that, I ask for a motion.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Daniel's got a comment.
Mayor, just to be clear, this lot already exists, and like I say, we're doing a, a site plan review, so this plat is the creation of lot thirty-seven. So that, that lot, like, is, we're creating that new lot that eventually will receive a, an application for it.
Okay.
Lot thirty-seven.
I ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve, um, a two lot, one parcel commercial subdivision plat called Valley Grove Business Park Plat Q, the subdivision approximately nineteen point sixteen acres in size and is approximately one, two, three, four, South Valley Grove Way and thirteen twelve South Valley Grove Way and parcel fifty-four dash four five zero dash zero zero three seven. This, this proposed plat includes the vacation, the, the vacation of parcel B and lot thirty-five of the Valley, Valley Grove Business Park Plat P subdivision in the Grove Zone, Valley Grove Mixed Use Overlay.
We have a motion by councilmember Williams, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Anderson. And, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes all our action items this evening, and we'll now go back. I see that, uh, our, uh, new senator has arrived and, uh, we'll go back up and, uh, now turn the time. Have you been sworn in yet or sworn at or?
Not really. Okay, you're still representative, right? I am, I am the senator now, but they've officially put me on the books. I don't know that I've raised my arm yet, but they had me sign stuff. And then there'll be a, a ceremonial one, first day of session, I think.
Well, welcome. Thank you for coming this evening.
It's a pleasure to be here. It's a, it's a, it's, it's been a little while since I've been before this council. The last time I was before this council, so, so I lived in Pleasant Grove and, and I've owned property in Pleasant Grove, uh, over the years. And the last time I was before this council, I think, was in relation to the TSSD lawsuit. And I've defended Pleasant Grove and, and, uh, and done things along those, along those lines, and I located my business in Pleasant Grove. Uh, so it's been a, I, I'm a big fan and, and it's been good to see that, you know, since that lawsuit resolved in two thousand and fifteen, I, I think there's something about two billion dollars within the affected area that's gone into, you know, into the development around that area. And so it's nice to see that you're meeting in a nicer place. I hope that some of those tax revenues built this building.
And I've defended Pleasant Grove and 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 done things along those, along those lines. And I located my business in Pleasant Grove. So it's been a, I'm a big fan and and it's been good to see that, you know, since that lawsuit resolved in two thousand fifteen, I think there's something about two billion dollars within the affected area that's gone into, you know, into the development around that area. And so it's nice to see that you're meeting in a nicer place. I hope that some of those tax revenues built this building. With the upcoming legislative session, I think more than anything, I probably, you have questions for me, but in terms of a lot of what I've been tasked to deal with is primarily on the court reform side. And so I'll be, personally, I'll be working on that. That was kind of a, an assignment that was, that was given to me to work on some of the court issues. But I am also dealing with a lot of the revenue and taxation issues. And so in addition to being an attorney, I have a master's in public administration. And and so a lot of that is related to, you know, public finance and the taxation side of things that I'm fairly interested in. And so I'm, I'm working on some of those issues and and I do enjoy the the budget side, which is rare for an attorney. Normally, they, but I like macroeconomics a little better than the micro. Once you get into putting equations in front of me, I'm probably not the best. But in any event, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the upcoming legislative session.
Counsel?
Is there anything that we can help you with, anything that maybe besides what you mentioned that we can help you with, any legislation that's coming up?
I don't know that there's a specific piece of, well, there's, there's a few things. So number one, oftentimes, what I have found and what I always tell cities that I represent, it's great to work with the league when you're aligned with the league. When you are not aligned with the league, please reach out to me directly. Okay? There are times where the league gets a little bit captive towards Salt Lake City or other larger paying cities. And so just, you know, when that alignment is not there, please reach out directly on things. And there are other issues that the league never touches that are municipal issues. And if I don't, if I don't know that it's coming up, then it's pretty difficult for me to to know that you have an interest in that issue on that. And so that's, that's one thing. The other thing that I would say is a piece of legislation that I'm sure you're aware of, that I, that I hope that you're integrally involved in is Keith Grover's school legislation. And, you know, he, he released that early so that everybody could tell him where he was wrong. Okay, like, that's part of the the process of legislation is, you know, hearing, you know, where people like and don't like what you have. And so make sure that you're giving him constructive feedback that isn't just, I don't like this, but is, I would rather have it be this way. And because ultimately, he's, you know, that needs to balance so that all three districts have their best chance of succeeding moving forward. And so that that is a piece of legislation that I'm sure that, you know, I know that you're watching closely and all of us need to be involved in.
Go ahead, Scott.
If I can just comment on that real quick. Sorry, I'm behind you here. We have, we have a working group, so us, Orem, Vineyard, and Linden. We have sent stuff back to Senator Grover with, you know, strikeouts or additions or whatever, just so you know. So we are having that dialogue. There are maybe one or two conflict points between the reorganized district and maybe the other two districts. So we'll keep in touch if there's things that we need to get on your radar for that.
Scott, has, has Grover responded to our?
No. So the, the cities all worked together to, because the cities were mostly in alignment on that specific piece of legislation. So those comments were sent just before Christmas.
Okay.
And so we, we just haven't seen anything or heard anything just yet. We talked about it yesterday in our meeting. There's gonna be a touch point with Senator Grover, probably through Mayor Young, Mayor Stoffer in, in Vineyard, or not Stoffer, Fulmer, sorry, Mayor Fulmer. So they have relationships with him and and to make sure that it's understood what our points are. But for the most part, the cities were pretty aligned on a decent part of that legislation, so.
Senator, is there, is there a House representative yet aligned with Grover on this that we need to be in contact with?
You know, previously, he had always gone with Representative Pulcifer on these. And I'm trying to think who he would have gone with on this. I'm, I'm not entirely certain on the House side. It may be Val Peterson, but I don't think that he's, he hasn't told me who he's gonna be using on the House side as a floor sponsor. But, you know, as, it's kind of a delicate thing because it is his bill. But what you'll, what I will need from you is if there are things that are, you know, that you feel like you're not being listened to, you may have, you know, there may be some level of compromise between everyone, but if there are things that, you know, that you need me to put some pressure on, on Senator Grover, I probably need to get that pressure before it gets, it's helpful to get it before it gets to the Education Committee. Okay? Once it gets out of the Senate, I can't touch it anymore, you know? And and I'm not on, I'm not on the Education Committee, so anything that I do would have to be on the floor, but it's, it starts to get cemented once the committee votes on it because everybody follows, you know, they're, they've studied it, you know, in more depth than the rest of the body. And if they're okay with it, then it probably moves forward with less changes until it gets over to the House side. And so I can do more if it's between when it's introduced and when it goes to the committee.
So you're, you're open to that? I mean, having all these avenues open to us if we have any kind of concerns or?
Yeah, I mean, there's gonna be, I, I'm certain that there's gonna be some level of, hey, this area likes this or this area doesn't like this. And and I think that, you know, hopefully, we can get to a good consensus bill, you know? And so I, I'm definitely open to helping facilitate getting to that point.
One of our worries is, you know, with, with the different new districts and the cities all involved in that, but we're, we're sensing there's a lot of outside groups that really wanna have a big, which is, it's fine, but they're, but they don't seem to be aligned with what we're thinking in the city. So we, we just hope that if that comes up, we.
What do you mean?
Well, it is just that they have their own ideas on, on how this bill ought to be formed and written and kind of maybe force us to do things we really don't want to be part of.
When you say outside groups, what are you, like, what are you talking about?
I, I wouldn't, I don't know if I call them education groups or just different.
Grassroots. Just grassroots groups.
Well, if they're citizens, they're gonna wanna be able to say things, too. It's not, this isn't the city's bill.
Well, it's not, and I see that, but, but sometimes those are, what we're seeing is, we're hearing some stuff that's really out there a little bit.
What are, what are you hearing?
Well, I.
I'm trying to understand where you're coming from, because I don't know exactly what you're, I'm not seeing.
I think they want more, I don't know, it's just kind of hard to quantify one thing. We'll just have to see what comes up.
Yeah, if you see something that concerns you, let me know.
You know, he says he's been open to do changes, but we, we haven't seen anything yet. And and some of it just doesn't make any sense and some of it was already in the code. So it was.
Well.
I guess, I guess my question to follow up on that was just, so you sponsored a bill during the summer, a different legislative session that changed some of the process to get these things passed. And you identified that as necessary because there were some issues with the bill, some contradictory language. Why didn't you fix it then if this was needed?
Well, it was largely because it doesn't, a special session is meant to deal with a specific instance. You're trying to be as narrow as possible to the issue in a special session because it's not going to, it actually, it doesn't have to go to committee and it doesn't get as much vetting as everything else. And so I was trying to be as narrow as possible to the issue at hand. There was quite a bit that, you know, the difference between where we were in twenty twenty-three versus where we are now with regards to SB two twenty-one, that had a lot of different policy issues to address a split, you know? And that's why Representative Pulcifer was involved in that, because she had been a school board member on the Jordan School District and had dealt with the Jordan Canyon split. And so she was trying to show, and she was making a lot of the policy issues at that time in the twenty twenty-four session. The issue that I was dealing with was more of a, if there's conflicting issues on a ballot, how do you address that? You know, I, I generally don't like being involved in public education policy. I usually, you know, it's not an area that, you know, I haven't been on the education committees. And so it's not an area that I'm commonly on. I am on, on various about, various committees regarding voting and ballot initiatives and ballot issues, which this, you know, it touched into both. And so, you know, I was involved in that. And some of that is because of my position in the House at the time and the constituents that I represented at the time. You know, that's, that's.
Yeah, I get that. I mean, one of our concerns, one of my concerns, has been that we make decisions as a city council based on the laws that's written.
Yeah.
And then when it gets changed in the middle of a thing, it really hurts us because we made a decision based on how the law was written and then we get the law pulled out from under us and then it changes either outcomes or or things that we would have done differently had the law been written that way in the first place. And that's one of my concerns with, with Senator Grover's bill, is that there were certain expectations that might have been going in. As a reorganized district, we may be entitled to certain protections under the current law that we don't want to lose because those are some of the factors that went into us making some decisions. So taking away a benefit after the fact seems to me like maybe a little bit hard for us to be able to make a decision as a city, especially when our legislature says, hey, we, we believe in federalism, we want the power to be to the people. And then we, as the city council, who's closest to our people, are making decisions based on what you tell us. And then halfway through the process, we've now had not just one, but this will be a second change. And so it's hard for us to make decisions. Could you understand that?
I can understand that. Can you tell me specifically which benefits you're talking about?
We believe that the reorganized district will be entitled to reimbursement of certain expenses that will be laid at us because, because of us not having chosen to split, but being forced to split. And so we believe that we should, and rightfully so, because we're not the ones choosing to leave, should be essentially made whole so it's in, and even as we leave, as, as they leave, that we're not left disadvantaged because of their vote. And so I think that any change in that seems like it might be a little bit difficult to make halfway through this process.
Are you basing that on SB two twenty-one? That that, like, are, like, are you saying that the legislation made that promise?
What we're saying is, at least from our understanding, and again, hey, we're in the same boat as you, we're not education specialists, that's why I don't want to be in this boat. But here's the other thing is, we've been told by education law specialists who have read that, and these are some of the Alpine School District Board members and other people from outside of the board, that the way that the law was currently intended to read and the way that it was kind of more or less applied in the Jordan Canyon School District was that, hey, there was a large, there was a large dispute about how to divide assets and what Jordan should get in order to be left whole when Canyons decided to leave. And so we've been told that the current law essentially protects the reorganized district that way. It says, you guys didn't vote to leave, you shouldn't have an exorbitant amount of startup fees because you're not supposed to be starting up. You're the district that's reorganized. And so we want your help as our representative of, of many of the students that are affected by that to say, hey, guys, and teachers and administrators, to say, hey, guys, these guys didn't vote to leave. I know you used kind of the girlfriend, boyfriend thing in your, in your speech up at the Hill. We didn't decide to break up. So we're not the ones that should have to bear the financial burden of starting up a district because we didn't decide to.
And we didn't vote.
And so, and so I, I'm asking you for, to, to protect us in that as our representative that represents most of PG.
Let me, let me back up a little bit. So is there something that you believe is changing in Keith Grover's bill from what it was prior to the school district split?
The feeling of.
I'm trying to understand the legislative.
Yeah, there's.
Let's have our legal counsel chime in, Dina.
Because I haven't seen what your changes, what your proposed changes are and your reasons for them.
You're the one not writing the bill. I get that.
Yeah.
But I appreciate, it sounds like you're gonna be available to us to say, hey, here's what, and we've identified some. I think our group has identified some of, of the things and that's been passed up. I think we would be happy to provide that to you so that you can review it and maybe talk to Senator Grover about our concerns.
Yeah, we, we continue to hear a three-way district split was voted on. And nothing could be further from the truth. A three-way district voting, well, was never, that was never a portion of.
Two portions of the district voted to leave.
That's, that's the point that we want to make.
But, yeah.
I was just gonna clarify for Senator Brown, Brown, Brownmer. And there is, in the existing code, in Senator Grover's proposed bill, line four eighty-nine currently reads that a reorganized school district is entitled to be reimbursed for expenses that they incur as a result of the reorganization, including studies and, I forget what the other language is.
Even redistricting.
And in the redistricting. In his proposed bill, clear back in line fifteen sixty-seven to fifteen sixty-nine, he has in there that the reorganized school district will be responsible for all of their own costs. So internally, the bill is contradictory because he didn't change the existing language and he proposed some language, additional language that is in conflict with what the current code says. We are concerned about that because if it changes and we are now responsible for all of the costs for, for reorganization, that's a benefit that we had under the existing code that would not be ours in the proposed change. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And sorry, what you haven't seen is, I think the other two districts have some language that would protect that, the second part of the language, we as a reorganized district don't necessarily agree with. That's this, what I was referring to, the sticky point, that's probably the one where it stood out the most. We just want to preserve the right for the future school board to have some negotiating leverage on really what these startup costs are gonna be. So we don't want that legislated out right now when that needs to be part of the discussion.
Well, I, I do think that that probably needs some clarity if there's, if there's contradiction. And as far as, you know, I'm hoping that everyone can negotiate that out so that it's clear, but then, you know, let's, let's make sure that everyone, like, what we want is everyone to feel like they're being treated fairly. Now, I, I understand that there's some degree of, you know, that Pleasant Grove doesn't feel like they were able to vote on it and they don't feel like that was fair.
The central, the central district, they all feel that way.
Well, we don't feel that way. That's what it was. Like, we literally, we couldn't vote. So.
And, and the legislature made that happen.
It's not a feeling, it's just that's what the facts are.
And there was a reason for that.
What, which was what?
The reason for that was because if there were multiple provisions on the ballot, number one, it's confusing, and number two, nobody knew what would be the end result of that.
But we should let the people decide how confusing it is. People should have had the right to determine for themselves if they found that confusing or not.
There's a reason why this passed overwhelmingly and bipartisanly. Like, there is a reason and it's because of confusion on the ballot. And so, and you may not agree with the decision, but that is part of why we have votes.
Right, why we should have been able to vote. That's exactly right, what you just said. Why we should have been able to vote and let the people determine where the confusion comes in. That right was taken away from thousands of people.
It was not taken away from thousands of people.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was. We were not able to vote for how our students and teachers in our community with the school district should be, how we should be. We, we, that was taken away from us.
And as a result, their, their taxes and an education system will be impacted.
What would happen if both of those proposals went on the ballot and both passed?
Why did the legislature get involved? The Alpine School District was going to.
To avoid that issue.
Well, they were gonna, they were, they were going to present.
They were gonna put one.
A, a two district split. And as soon as that announcement came out, the legislature came out and said, no, 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 we don't want that. We're gonna exclude the city, the Alpine School District. We're gonna make it so it's only one person.
Well, it's because the cities had already put the other one on the ballot. So we went, the first, the first one in was the first one awarded. Okay, the first one in was the first that was able to be voted on. If you have both on the ballot, seriously, what is the legal result if both of those pass?
Can I tell you?
What happens?
Can I tell you what would have happened? American Fork voted not to pass it. So under the old law, that, that interlocal would not have passed pursuant to the old law because, because American Fork would not have voted to actually move forward with it. And so under the old laws, way, and hey, you're the one.
That's not an accurate statement of the law.
And so if, if one of the cities had backed out and not put it on the ballot, my understanding is they could have broken the interlocal. That was one of your arguments, that you said, hey, once they're in this, and for a dime and for a dollar, they have to continue on because the old law would have allowed them to break the whole interlocal. Had that happened, we would not have had conflicting results because this north district would not have passed. That means that it would have been the west and us, so the only possibility would have been a two-way split. So your law created a problem that didn't exist and then fixed a problem that didn't happen.
Representative Rogers, with all due respect, that is simply not accurate. Representative Rogers, with all due respect, that is simply not accurate.
Okay, I understand.
And let me, let me tell you. And, and here is the question. If you have both ballot propositions on the ballot and they both pass, what do you believe happens?
Well, the problem is, there could have been.
You're still not answering that question.
I, I'm telling you what would have happened is, you, you, you fixed a problem that didn't exist. Because if you're saying, th- that was not the only fix. You could have said, if they both pass, then the Alpine School District, because it's the larger entity, whatever that proposal was that passed, would govern.
So Senator Brownmer.
How do you, you could have said, that's an argument.
Yeah, you, you could have said that.
So what you're doing is you're putting them into a piece of litigation.
No, no, if you wanted to change the law, just make the one that has the most votes win.
Just do it the way you want, but that's not.
The one that gives everybody a cha- the one that gives everybody a chance to vote and then whatever the majority vote is. So I understand that you saw a conflict, you resolved it one way. The way that you resolved it was a way that disenfranchised our citizens. And that, and that's why we're a little passionate about it. I understand you chose to go a different way and you fixed it one way. The way that you fixed it led to the result that our, our residents never got a vote and they would never have got a vote.
That is, that is the methodology of the formation of every government out there. Okay? Now, when, when the thirteen colonies left England, England didn't get a vote. They broke off. People are allowed to form their own political subdivision.
Well, hey, I, I, I'm just saying, so you can't sit up there and say you didn't have an option. But you can't sit up there and, and, and tell the residents of Pleasant Grove that you didn't have an option to give them a vote. You chose, you chose an option that took the vote away from, you may think that that's the most efficient and effective way. I get that argument. I understand what you're saying. But there was another way you could have chosen and you can't tell the residents of Pleasant Grove there was no other way to fix that conflict, right?
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay, so, so you agree that you could have given them a vote, but you chose a different way. And that's all I'm saying.
Senator Brownmer, I have a, just maybe you could clarify this. Before House Bill three thousand three, let's say that that never happened, okay? What, what happens if Alpine School District would have put, like you're saying, would have put their option on there? Was there part of that law before then that said, these, now, I get it, the interlocals have every right to go and put this on the ballot, right? I get, I totally get that. It's their right and it's on them that they voted yes. What would have happened if those, like you said, was the West, Central, put their interlocals on there and you allowed Alpine School District to go, move forward as their duties at the time. I don't know if they had them before, whatever. Could you address that? What actually would have happened? Maybe you can answer that for us.
They actually don't know. And that's the problem. It would have resulted in a massive piece of litigation. It would have been a real disaster all across the board.
Well, we still would have had Alpine School District intact at that point.
No, you may not have. You, it depends on who won the litigation. And it would not have been determined by voters, it would have been determined by the courts.
Well, thank you. We'll.
Well, I guess we don't know because we don't know how it would have come, what would have come out, right?
And that, that's a big reason why, as the legislature is looking at something like this, that's why they resolved it the way they did and that's why they resolved it the way they did overwhelmingly.
But, but, but Mr. Brownmer, what, what we feel is that this was an initiative brought about by Mr. and Mrs. Brownmer to initiate a split that would only enhance Northern District and leave out the vote of the Central. Ninety-nine percent of the vis, of the residents of Pleasant Grove feel that way. So we're, we're glad you're a representative. We are hopeful, hopeful that you will protect us in the future. We, we wish you luck.
Um, I actually have another thing I want to say. And, um, I have always appreciated the conversations that we've had and I'm grateful you've always been available. Along with the lines of what has been said, there is one more thing that I want you to watch out very carefully for us. Forty percent of the legislators in this state are developers.
Let me address that.
Okay, just a second. Let me finish. There is a very large push to take away cities' abilities to, to, to have control over what happens in our city. There is a big push to take away zones, to take away permitted uses in zones, timeframes for cities to be able to address concerns. If it's not done in a certain amount of period, then it just happens. What this means is that in Highland and in Alpine, a developer can build anything he wants on any piece of property. In Pleasant Grove, we're almost built out. We have a lot of infill that has to happen. But we've been elected as citizens to watch out for our community. And for us, that means that there are pieces of property, for example, in our North, they want large lots and we want to protect that. And, and we also understand that the affordable housing, a developer can come in and develop multifamily housing on pieces of property. We cannot dictate what they charge. So I am begging, as you see legislation coming through that takes away our rights as citizens in Pleasant Grove, that you will do everything you can to protect us.
Yeah, I think on the, first of all, the, the developer statistic that they have, there are a lot of developers up there, but it's not at forty percent.
I want to say something about this. So for example.
Let me talk.
Okay.
I'd let you talk.
Let him go.
Let me talk, okay?
You have.
It's true, there are a lot. But they, they basically took anyone who owns any property at all and said that's a developer. So for example, I own point one eight percent of a commercial office building that I was looking at putting my law firm in and then, and then backed out. Now, I've never developed property. I've never gone and changed the zoning and built anything. I bought a share in an office building and they count me as a developer. Okay, like, that, you know, or if somebody owns a, uh, you know, if they buy a duplex as part of their investment portfolio, they count that as a developer. That's not what most people consider to be a developer. Um, and so that, that statistics is, is a little bit odd, but there are, but I will say this. The Speaker of the House and the President of the Senate are legitimately developers. And I will also say that one of my concerns in how the infrastructure of Utah is being funded is that they are continuing to follow the congestion model of funding roads and infrastructure. And then what they say is, we want to change the development standards that cities have to hold developers accountable to. And rather than fund the infrastructure and say, we're going to force the cities to just increase the density, rather than fund the infrastructure in the places where there is growth, they say, we're going to have the, the cities hold all the developers to pay for all of that infrastructure installation and hope that the prices go down. Okay? Now, I think the cities have done their part. Right now, we have over eighty thousand, uh, entitled lots waiting to be built. And the reason why they haven't been built, it's, it's not entirely on factors that are controlled by the state. Really what it is, is it's a combination of inflation of goods and inflation of labor, of the labor market. And so it just doesn't pencil for people to come in and develop unless they have such a high density that they can do it. You know, and that's, that's part of the, you know, that's really what's happening there. However, um, I, and so I, you know, right now, we're kind of in a fight to try to redo the models for how they do, how they award roads so that it takes a greater account for growth and future growth, so that we're not always playing catch-up on what, we have to wait until the growth comes and becomes congested and then go after it. And so you're waiting for B and C roads to get in funded on the ba, being installed, you know, because the cities are forcing them to come in and do it and, and making the developers pay for it, which they pass on to the homeowners, which increases the cost. And then after that, you're going to go in and install the freeways and, and widen the freeways and, and make the infrastructure actually stick right. You know, like, there's a problem with the model right now. And a lot of that comes down because of the federal funding model, it, it follows that, that methodology because it's a very East Coast bias and they're not, their populations aren't really growing. But, so that's, that's one thing. And, and one of the things that I've been pushing on my colleagues in Utah County is to say, look, stop pushing on us for higher density before you fund us for our infrastructure.
Correct.
You know, like, that's a big problem. Now, I do want to go back to Councilmember Williams and your comment to me, that it's my wife and me. Would you be comfortable if I came to a public meeting and brought your wife into it? Really?
I, I'm just making.
That offensive? Now, the second thing that I want to say is, now, I believe in the district split. I do. And my wife does too. However, we weren't involved in lining up the cities or doing anything. In my district, I had five cities that unanimously voted to split and they asked me to go and represent them. And I went and I represented them.
Wait, four of the five? AF said no, right?
AF wasn't in my district.
Oh, they're not? Okay. I apologize.
I had five cities, all of which voted unanimously. You know, Draper's in my district, okay? Now, and the Utah County side of Draper was, was part of that. And frankly, this is not a, and I was asked to run the bill. It wasn't my idea. It's because I'm a good legislator and I get stuff done. So when you come at me and you come at my wife.
I'm not coming at your wife, sir.
Yeah, yeah, you are.
No, I'm not.
When you mention my wife in a public meeting, you're coming at my wife. And you better watch it. I'm serious. I'm not going to put up with that. Don't mention my wife in a public meeting. Yeah.
I'm going to get off topic here for a second. Is that okay, Senator?
Probably for the best.
Okay. Um, and I know how you probably feel on this one, but, uh, our city went through quite a bit of angst with this, with the court ruling. You probably know what I'm talking about. Tough. And it will probably, and it gets back to what, uh, Councilmember Anderson said. We would love, and we'll probably work with the league on this, right? Because I know it's probably going to come up again. Um, but we would love to be able to work with you and protect what we fought for, for so hard, hard on, right? So, and I know, I know how you feel a little bit about.
Yeah, so I, I don't love that, that ruling. I actually think that a, a fee is something that you can avoid by not using the service. And I think that it's a, some of the standards are a little bit tricky, but it is what it is and we need to clarify it. I do know that, um, that ruling will be subject to a pretty significant scrutiny once it is, it, the first time that a city decides to really apply it against the LDS church or against IHC. And the best way to protect that ruling is going to be to exempt nonprofit entities from the fees. To be honest, that, that's the, that's the biggest danger to that ruling. And so I do have a bill filed open that I am running to exempt them because I think that they'll win that lawsuit.
Is there anything else in that bill that will affect what we fought for in the court ruling?
It would probably do something along the lines of, uh, it'll be similar to what Representative, um,
I can't remember her name.
Yeah.
I can't remember her name either, but she's one that ran the bill last year.
Yeah, she, she ran the bill last year. And essentially what she.
Yeah, Representative Peterson.
She ran in, yeah, Representative Peterson. There's like seven Representative Petersons. And so, like, but, um, she ran into that last year and what, essentially it was saying, that bill died because it didn't have the exemptions. And so at the very least, it will have the exemptions and it will have the, uh, basically the truth in taxation. Like, let people know what's going on, on these road fees.
Kind, well, yeah, kind of like what we, we already did, right? We already followed, I think, everything that was in the bill. We're just trying to see if you're willing to work with us and give our.
What did we do with the church on, in our?
Well, Provo has some weird.
Yeah, they're not exempt.
Okay, Provo had the exemptions.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and basically what, I won't say that, I, I, I would say that what the church would likely do from a legal framework on this is they would find the city with the worst version of the law and challenge it. And they're going to have plenty to choose from. And, and I think that they probably win on that, uh, based on what I've seen.
I'm just asking that you, that if, if you need help or if you want some insight, that.
Yeah.
There's plenty of us that can come in.
I'm happy to work with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and it goes back to, uh, the state funding lack. Cause in the beginning, we were getting money from, what we still do, from fuel tax and that beautiful little recipe that they've come up with. Um, and it was falling very short. So we have a hundred and twenty miles of road and sixty percent of them, seventy percent of them are in very, very poor repair. And so we did what we needed to do to increase funding because we were not getting that from the state.
Yeah, well, and the state's funding fell off and they had to change their tax system to deal with, with that shortfall based on fuel. You know, cars became more efficient, you know, they were buying less gas as a percentage and everything dropped.
And electric. Electric has happened.
Electric, in theory, but it, it's just starting to hit to where it actually makes a difference. There, there, there's just barely enough adoption to do it. And so the, the state had to backfill a lot of that funding over the years with other funding sources. And, and the cities, you know, had that power to do that as well and had to choose, you know, how they were going to do it, whether it was through, you know, general taxes on the property tax side or through a, you know, a transportation utility fee.
Yeah. And by the way, um, our city attorney, um, on one of the committees that you sit on with the, the courts, um, she's pretty darn smart, so.
She is. I love your city attorney.
I would love to offer her. She's like, looking at me, no way.
Senator, thank you for coming and, and hopefully, uh, you know, we need to work together and, and go forward and, and, uh, uh, I'm, I'm sorry if some things have been said here tonight that have offended you and, and, uh, hopefully we can go forward on this. But it's, it's pretty tough for us sometimes because we, we just hear from our citizens and, and this school district split is really kind of really saying, why did you guys let this happen? And we says, it's not us. But I will, there is, in the Central District, the largest city, and they've told me several times, we just wanted to create the most ideal school district. Is all that they wanted to do. And they think they have. But we don't think we've got an ideal situation on our end. So that's kind of, dude, so. And it seemed like everything was kind of, uh, catered to them to be able to do what they did and we, we had no choice. And so that's, that's kind of, and maybe you disagree with that, but it's, you know, I can't tell you how many people have called me, why didn't we get to vote on this?
Yeah.
About this split. And I says, because the legislature says we didn't get to. We, we could have voted on a interlocal, but they, you know.
Yeah. And, and there was no option to do that until twenty twenty, until the twenty twenty-four session. That had never been an option for the entire district to vote on someone leaving. And it was never intended that there would be multiple on the ballot and that's what we had to fix.
Yeah.
So, you know, it, it's not like this is some longstanding, you know, a hundred and fifty-year precedent that every district got to vote on a departure for every part of the district that wanted to leave. That had never happened before in the history of our state, what you're asking for. And, and then, you know, with, with two on the ballot, we had to resolve that problem.
So, well, hopefully we can move forward. We, we as a city council want, and mayor, we want to get out of the school business. We, it is part of our thing, but it really isn't. We want to get the new districts established with, with their own board.
As a legislator, I want to get out, but.
And, and, and so they can go forward and we'll just see what the consequences going forward is, but, uh, uh, so, thank you for coming this evening.
Yeah.
One, one comment about England not getting to vote. Um, it wasn't going to affect their property taxes.
Or their education.
And so.
It did affect their GDP and their entire wealth throughout the country. That's one of the reasons why they were fighting that war. If they didn't think it would affect them, they wouldn't have sent over forty thousand soldiers to New York Bay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I don't think you're suggesting that we fight.
No, I'm not.
Like, cause, I mean.
But she's saying it didn't affect them.
They didn't get a vote, so they went to war. We didn't get a vote. I'm not saying you, we should treat it the same, right?
It just affects, it affects our, our homes, our, our teachers, our children. We take that personally.
Well, and it is eighty percent of our sales, our, our property tax.
I, I was just gonna say, I, I do appreciate that you represented your district and now I think Pleasant Grove might be the largest city that you represent as a senator. So we would just ask you to represent us with the same zeal.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
And I, and I do. I, if you talk to any of the mayors that I've worked with and the city councils, you know, my typical thing is before the session, I go and I, and I meet with each city. And after the session, I go back and I report with each city.
Appreciate that.
And, you know, I, and I've never had any issues with the cities. I, I mean, tonight was kind of a unique thing for me. And, and I'll tell you, Councilmember Williams. And, and I'll tell you, Councilmember Williams, you know, let's work on the relationship there. But you started it off with a bang, and so.
I'm just telling you the perception, Senator. I'm just telling you the perception. I want you to be aware of the perception.
Okay, well, we'll work on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and in an ideal world, um, we would have all gathered together um, and said, what's the best thing for our students? And it, the conversation would have logically resolved.
I, I, I will tell you, in an ideal world, a school board would have done this on their own without having to be forced by a bunch of municipalities to do it. And they also would have gone from a seven-member board to a nine-member board when they had the chance. And they would have looked at the size of the district and thought, how can we make a logical split sooner rather than later? And they wouldn't have, have loaded their administration with as much bloat as they had, which they had a significant amount of administrative bloat.
Um, and so, maybe legislation should be triggers, so it didn't feel so targeted to us. Maybe the legislation is, here's some triggers. And I agree, and I also believe this with the format of government for Utah County, that there should be some triggers that say, at this point.
I mean, I'll, I'll be honest, if I was setting the policy, you know, way back when on school district splits, it would have, it would have just been, when you do not have a school board member for each high school that you have, you have to split.
Yeah.
Because that was one of the biggest problems, is once you have divisions between school board members where they're representing multiple high schools, it, it left people feeling like they were not being represented appropriately in different areas. And Pleasant Grove was one of those, at times, that, you know, it depended on where people lived.
We didn't have any, we didn't have any issue with a split.
Yeah.
We just, we just were concerned about how it was done.
Well, they're never very easy, I'll, I'll say that. And it, and, you know, and it, the same thing happened with the school closures. You know, that's the only other real education bill that I've been involved with. And that was to say, look, like, let's get a better process for closing schools, because we're going to have a whole lot of them in Salt Lake County, um, you know, in Salt Lake City in particular, that have to close as their student population dwindles. And so, I agree, it's, it's a messy, it's a messy split. It's probably still going to be better than the Canyons and Jordan was. Um, you know, there's a lot.
Let's hope so, for hell's sakes.
Yeah.
Well, and as long.
That's a sixteen-year mess.
Well, and so, that's the, that's our.
Actually, five years out, most of, five years out, most of the teachers said they're glad that they split.
Yeah.
Five years out from after that split, they were almost unanimous on both the Jordan and the Canyon side, that they were happy that they did it, but it was a mess for that first little while, especially from a fiscal standpoint.
Yes, and the assets, and, and that is.
Yeah, and the assets. And S B two twenty-one did a lot on the division of assets to help with that. So.
Okay.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Yep.
Okay, that concludes all of our, uh, business items this evening. And Scott, do you want to, uh, go over any calendar? We've got, if you have anything else that.
I have nothing to say, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Jensen, do you have anything to?
Uh, well, for you, Mayor, I mean, we have our, for the, for the chamber, we have our State of the Cities on January fourteenth, eleven thirty at Trucordian. I don't know, have we sent that to you yet, Scott?
Uh, let me check.
Okay, if not, we'll send.
Yeah, I think that came.
It's across the freeway over in Linden, it's the new, Rocky Stills, I won't say his company, but who he works for. But they've offered their, their big space to, uh, accommodate that. And that'll be Jan- January fourteenth, eleven thirty. Lunch will be provided. But if we haven't sent it, I'll send it to Scott, and then he can send it out.
I think I've sent out the appointment, but not the venue.
Not the venue, and we'll get the venue to you, we'll get the address.
Yes, you sent it.
Yeah, the.
Wait, it says Hyatt House in Provo.
No, let's change, Hyatt House had a conflict come up, and so, we've had to change it.
Initially, it was Hyatt House.
Yeah, initially, it was Hyatt House.
It was Hyatt House. The new venue, I'll update the appointment.
They had a bigger paying customer come, so we had to move on.
A paying customer?
Yeah, a big one.
A paying.
Sid, do you have anything else? Diana?
Oh, yeah. Um, we had the most delightful night on Saturday night. And, um, this was the ribbon cutting of the Ruth. And, um, this is, and I, I know that there was an, uh, economic study that was done. Um, Julie Cook was telling me about that.
Yeah, they did an economic study to show the impact.
And she said it was something like seven million dollars that were going to, that was going to come into the city um, in seven years, something like that.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact numbers. There was the overall economic impact, and then there was actual revenues to the city. And I don't, I'd, I'd have to look that number up to.
But also, I think one of the most, um, and I don't know, um, I can't remember having this conversation, but in our city, um, bill, in the newsletter, on the back page, there was the announcement that every home in Pleasant Grove gets two tickets to go to ragtime. And I am encouraging all to go. That it was, they could have opened up with Mary Poppins, and they didn't. They opened up with a bang. And, um, I know that the construction workers were working twenty-four seven to make that happen. And I'm grateful for staff to, um, accommodate that crazy schedule there, that last, those last couple of weeks. But the Cook family, the DoTerra, Pleasant Grove City have united to do something that is going to be a huge blessing. And I'm just so, so proud of what has happened in the last couple of years, so.
I have nothing to say.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Just echo Diana's comments.
So, yeah, I will.
Y'all echo Diana's comments, that's true.
Let me make a comment on the follow-up with Diana's here, and I, and it's, and it's, and I'm directing this at the staff because the council got a lot of, uh, thanks, council, for all they did, and the mayor and everything. But I'll tell you, Denise, Tina, Scott.
Daniel.
And Daniel and his crew.
Neil.
We, we couldn't have done it without them. I mean, they made it happen. We didn't, we didn't do that. We just says, okay, go for it. But they made it happen, and, and there were some times in the negotiations with a roomful of attorneys, and I, I said, this is never going to happen. We can't come to an agreement. And Tina probably felt that way sometimes, so anyway.
And it was over Christmas.
No, not this.
No, the legal agreements were all.
They were last, two years ago.
They were over Christmas, and it was twenty-four seven for legal.
So, thank you, and you guys.
Yes, we appreciate it.
So, you made that happen. So, anyway, but, okay, just one thing from the mayor here on housekeeping. We, uh, and I want to do it on our first meeting in February. We, the council needs to appoint a new pro tem.
Mayor, we put that on the agenda for two, in two weeks.
Uh, I will not be here in two weeks. So, I, I've already asked the existing pro tem to, so let's push that to, can we push that to the first?
If you'll just put that on our first meeting in February.
And, uh, I've found out I need to go east for a little while on that, that week there. So, anyway, so, uh, on a business, uh, thing, so, uh, and then, I will have out, if you wanted, want a new, or you'd like preference on a committee assignment, please let me know, because I'll have those ready for February, our first meeting in February.
Okay.
So, if you want to switch, just let me know which one you're interested in. And go, okay? With that, if there's nothing else we have, I ask for a motion to adjourn.